Good evening and welcome to the Paramount City Council Chambers. We apologize for the delay there. We had, did have some experience of technical difficulties, but we seem to have them sorted out. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. This is a special notice that pursuant to Executive Order N-2920, executed by the Governor of California on March 17th, 2020, and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the meeting of the City Council scheduled for Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, will allow members of the public to participate and to address the City Council during the open session of the meeting via live stream and/or teleconference only. And with that, I will now turn it over to Mayor Peggy Lemmons to start the meeting. Mayor Lemmons?
Thank you. Call to order the January 12th, 2021 meeting of the Paramount City Council. Can we have the pleasure of allegiance led by my mayor almost? Absolutely. Please stand and place their right hand over their heart as we pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Were we able to reach the deacon staff?
No, Madam Mayor, we were not.
Okay, so bear with me. I'm going to do the invocation. Do you could please bow your head? Our Father, we ask that you bring us together so that we can conduct the city's business in a respectful and truthful manner that would benefit the residents of our community. In Jesus' name, we thank you. Amen. Can I have a roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Aguayo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Guillen?
Here.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Here.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Present.
Mayor Lemmons?
Here. Okay, next up, we have some presentations. And tonight, we're going to start with the assistance that we received from the community for the COVID-19 pandemic. As we all know, difficult circumstances often bring out the best in people. We have seen that during the pandemic. As this past year has worn on, there have been a number of Paramount community members who have stepped forward to help with COVID-19 related issues. This evening, we are thanking some of these wonderful colleagues. The Paramount Entertainment Center, which includes the Audi Theaters, the Paramount Brighton, and the Paramount Swabney, have offered outstanding assistance. They provided their huge parking lot for the free food distribution held by LA County, and the city's drive-through Halloween Festival and Breakfast with Santa, all at no cost. These events simply would not have happened without their goodwill offering. Next, we would have J1 Foods, a longtime Paramount company. They have an extraordinary, they made an extraordinary gesture by donating nearly 15,000 masks to the city for distribution throughout the community. They were given to residents during the Halloween Festival and at Breakfast with Santa, and also to newer service clubs for further delivery. A manual reform church, which for years has provided volunteers and services for the people of Paramount, sent crews to work at the county food giveaways. The church also teamed up with local nonprofits of world compassion to hold another free food distribution. These events were extremely helpful in getting important resources to the families affected by the pandemic. We thank all of these heroes for their great work, for they are indeed heroes. Each will be given a certificate of appreciation from the city. Next, we'd like to talk about the volunteers that we have for our special fall and winter events for 2020. Every year during our special events, the city gets a tremendous amount of support from volunteers. This, of course, those events in the fall and winter were completely reworked due to district public health guidelines. Within the confines of the pandemic, we were able to make that really enjoyable for our residents. Featured are fabulous volunteers and their contributions were invaluable. In place of the Halloween Festival in Paramount Park, we produced a drive-through event at the Paramount Entertainment Center. There were all sorts of spooky events and lots of candy handed out at the end. Special thanks to the cheer squad from Paramount High School, from the Muciman, and the Latina Art Foundation. Also, American Market and the Holiday Pro donated cookies for kids and the Star After School Program to the car that was deployed at the festival. With one drive-through Breakfast with Santa, with our drive-through Breakfast with Santa, again, at the Paramount Entertainment Center, our Santa colors worked to make everything go smoothly. Once more, we thank the cheer group, Mucita, the Latina Art Foundation, as well as the folks from the Los Grados YMCA. I want to add that the Mucita Moms sent all the candy bags for Halloween. And as they do every year, they put together thousands of apple and candy cane bags that would normally be handed out during the Santa night. Those were given out instead at the Market of Santa. In addition to these events, Halloween Christmas features two home decorating contests. We had more great volunteers helping out, taking on the very difficult task of judging the applicants. For Halloween, we're Frank Marazo, representing Paramount Unified School District and to the peace, sister cities, Lourdes Aguayo, staff member and cheer post for the Paramount High, and Emily Perez of the Latina Art Foundation. For Christmas, they were pastors Deborah and Larry Jameson of the Life Day Church, Doris Ancez of the Paramount Chamber of Commerce, and Jim Hyde of the Paramount Health Club. We'd like to thank all of you, these volunteers and the others who stepped up throughout the years to make Paramount strong. We're very proud of them. Each of the ones we've highlighted tonight will also be receiving a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the council. Halloween and home decorating contests. Now we're going to recognize the winners of the new and exciting contest we started this year of home decorating. They were previously featured on our social media and city website, and their prizes include gift certificates and yard signs. While these folks won the top honors, we appreciate all of the residents who took part. Congratulations to the following. For the Halloween home decorating, first place went to the Jeffrey family at 16636 Georgia Avenue. Second place went to the Montelavon family at 6827 San Juan Street. And third place, the Zanarano family at 7620 Racine Avenue. For the Christmas decorations, that's the holiday light, went to the Dowden family at 8519 Madison Street. Originality, the Bajaha family at 15310 Grand Lucina Road. That holiday scene, the Molosco family at 6647 San Juan Street. Thank you all for bringing so much joy to our community. I know I certainly enjoyed riding around and looking at the beautiful presentations. And we look forward to next year's contest. Before we finish, I want to say that the city is very grateful to our residents for their patience and understanding as we transform our holiday events, starting with Halloween. You watch the tree lighting ceremony on YouTube, wait to attend as you rode through your neighborhoods on the train, and enjoy Breakfast with Santa in your vehicles in the evening, without the breakfast, of course. As an initiative beginning of these presentations, during tough times, people come together and make things the best they can be. So during memorable holidays, so it was during memorable holidays in Paramount. Always remember, we are Paramount. I think they all joined me in saying there was a single category or person that was mentioned that we all do personally and equally appreciate all of the efforts that they put forth. We wish that we could be there to recognize you in person, but please now, it doesn't take anything away from the gratitude and appreciation that we have all deserved and they gave to our city. Next up, we have City Council Public Comment Updates from Mr. Moreno.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get into the city public comment updates from the December City Council meeting, I wanted to bring up two things that arose over the past week that are of importance that I want to just briefly mention. First of all, we received a notice from the Golden State Water Company, who provides water service for about 300 homes in the north end of town, north of the 105 freeway. The notice that we received stated that recent testing at one of their well sites detected levels of the two chemicals PFOA and PFAS that were above what the state calls the precautionary notification level. However, the levels that were detected were actually lower than what the state calls the response level. Response level is something that could require the shutdown of a water well. So they were below that level, but above the precautionary notification level. So as a result, Golden State Water Company did do their due diligence and notified us, the governing body, as required by law. Again, I just want to point this out, as I made it aware to you last week, that we are monitoring this situation and that we've also been in touch with the general manager of Golden State Water. In case the chemical levels do get any higher, we're exploring ways for them to purchase water through our connections with the Metropolitan Water District, rather than continuing to pump underground water. The next thing I wanted to just briefly touch on is in regards to COVID. There's been lots of talk this week and last week about additional COVID testing and about the preparation for the vaccine rollout. I just wanted to make you and the public aware that we have reached out to the County Department of Health Services to inquire about additional testing for our community at Paramount Park. While they cannot, the county could not provide any immediate testing dates, they did ask us if we'd like to be the first city in LA County to host what they're calling is a COVID testing bus. This bus can test up to 528 individuals per day, and it usually operates from Tuesday through Saturday. So we, of course, immediately said yes to the request. So we're just waiting to hear back from them. I'm hoping to hear back from them by this Thursday, whether or not we got the bus to come to Paramount. So once we do hear that, we will, we will definitely publicize those additional testing dates if we do get it. And now in regards to the vaccine rollout for COVID, we have offered to the county the use of Paramount Park for large-scale vaccination site for when the vaccine is distributed to the general public. We all know right now that they're currently vaccinating healthcare providers in the first tier of the vaccination rollout. So they did agree to put us on their list, and as they get closer to the rollout, probably early spring, we should hear from them if Paramount Park was actually considered or not. So we'll stay on this, and also I want to mention the thank you to Vice Mayor Olmos for calling in to the County Board Supervisors meeting last week to plead for more healthcare services for our area. We are going through a definitely a challenging time right now, and we all need all the help that we can get for COVID response. So with that, now jumping into the City Council Public Comment Updates. This is from the December 15th City Council meeting. We did have one public comment that does render a response, and that was from Mr. Alfredo Buonwellus. Mr. Buonwellus had three requests. The first one is he requested that the Parking Committee reconvene on a virtual platform rather than in person. We inform Mr. Buonwellus that as he, as was mentioned when he made the same request at the November 17th Council meeting, that our response was that shifting to a virtual format for the Parking Committee would not be as effective as in-person meetings for a number of reasons. We will continue to monitor the COVID-19 health orders for non-essential in-person meetings and revisit the possibility of in-person meetings when social distancing orders are scaled back. The second request from Mr. Buonwellus was that parking citations be suspended. Our response to that was due to the environmental health and safety risks that are associated with vehicles not moving for street sweeping, coupled with the indirect littering of COVID-19 related products like gloves and masks. The storm drains and gutter, it would not be safe to suspend parking enforcement. So we're not recommending that at this time. His third request by Mr. Buonwellus was that Salute Park be reopened. The response to that is staff reported immediately following Mr. Buonwellus' public comment on December 15th, that Salute Park is in fact already open, but in modified hours due to COVID-19 restrictions. So with that, that does conclude my public comment updates, Madam Mayor, from the December 15th, 2020 meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Are there any questions? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the public comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have two oral and no email. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andrew, our Assistant City Manager, Andrew Vialpino, who will get the two public comments on the line. Andrew?
Thank you, John. One second, please.
Hello?
Good evening. This is the City of Paramount calling for Yesenia Cuarenta?
Yes.
Good evening, Ms. Cuarenta. This is Paramount City Council. We're calling regarding your request for public comment. You'll be limited to three minutes, and you're being broadcast live to the City Council, so your time will start now.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and formally introduce myself. My name is Yesenia Maria Cuarenta, and I'm the newly-elected Paramount Unified School District President. But I just wanted to again formally introduce myself and say that I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues on the Paramount City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
Okay, one moment while I bring the next caller on the line.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is the City of Paramount calling for Fred Becerra.
Speaking.
Hi, Mr. Becerra. This is the Paramount City Council. We're calling regarding your request for public comment. You're being broadcast live now to the City Council, and you'll be limited to three minutes, which will start now.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. Mayor Lemmons, Vice Mayor Olmos. My name's Fred Becerra, and what I've been wondering about is the role of cryptocurrency in the city's future. One of the biggest things that I've noticed in the last few months is that banks have now been allowed to go and accept Bitcoin and other cryptocurrencies. This comes out of the office of the Assistant Comptroller of the Currency. And I was also looking at the fact that, you know, things are getting much, much more difficult for individuals, and hence it probably will stem up to the city with the decreasing power, the buying power of the dollar. And so, you know, paying for public works, city upgrades, the new train station that's coming in, if we want to go and improve it further than what Metro wants us to have, you know, reasons for outside money to come in and positively impact our town. If we, if we don't start building that now, it might get a bit more challenging in the future. And I genuinely believe that cryptocurrency could help. Perhaps if in the future, maybe, maybe 10% of fines or fees could be allowed to be, you know, I guess, applied with not just dollars, but perhaps if cryptocurrency could be accepted by the city in that kind of an amount. So that way, the city could grow some dividends. And, you know, similar to how Ben Franklin set aside some principal and waited, you know, the city was told to wait for a long time, maybe 100 or 150 years, but they could, they started to receive that stipend to help pay for the benefits of the city. So, oh, and all, by the way, I know that cryptocurrency is volatile, but there are, there are ways to go and set stop losses and safety nets for, to protect that value there. And so my question is, if the city is open to going and learning about this and exploring it further, so that way, it may get easier for the city to be able to deliver the great services that we've seen so far, or maybe even expand them and become an even better city. Thank you for your time, everyone. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you for your call.
There are no more public comments, Madam Mayor.
And I believe at the beginning there were no written comments. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, would that move into the compact calendar? Some moves, almost? Second five wire? Okay, I have a motion by Olmos in the second five wire. This is for the compact calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Next up, I intend the public hearing on the General Plan Amendment Number 20-2 and Zone Change Number 230- Senior Assisted Independent Living Facility at 16675 through 16683 Paramount Boulevard. Can we have a summary, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This first item under new business involves the City Council approving the entitlements that would allow for the construction of a senior housing complex at the entrance to our city on Paramount Boulevard at 70th Street. We're also contributing to the project, funds from our low mod housing fund, and as a result, this would provide much-needed affordable housing for our senior population, as well as housing and services for those families in our community who are in need of assisted living for their aging parents or grandparents, and who want to keep their loved ones close to them. This project funds from our low mod housing fund will be at another date. We will bring that agreement back to you. But tonight, you will once again be reviewing the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change. As you'll soon see, the facility itself is planned to be a mixed-use three-story building. The other positive for this project is that it would definitely eliminate two blighted properties right at one of the main points of entrance into our city. So you'll hear one presentation, but there are actually two approvals that we're asking, or that we're seeking from you tonight, that need to do separate votes. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Planning Director, Mr. John Carver, who will handle the admin. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and council members. This, again, is a request for a General Plan Amendment from Central Business District to mixed-use commercial and senior-assisted independent living facility. The project also involves a Zone Change request from General Commercial to PDPS, mixed-use commercial and senior facility. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this project to the City Council at its December 2020 meeting, and the Development Review Board approved the design and layout of the project at that same meeting. The property, again, is located at 16675 to 16683 Paramount Boulevard. The 13,500 square foot building is occupied by a bar and an auto repair business. Here's an aerial of the site, highlighted in purple, at the northwest corner of Paramount Boulevard and 70th Street. Here's a photo of the site, looking in a westerly direction from Paramount Boulevard. And just a little background on mixed use in the city, we do have some examples of existing mixed use. The two examples on the left are across from City Hall on Paramount Boulevard, while the third example is at the corner of Paramount Boulevard and Somerset. Looking at the project description, the General Plan Amendment and the Zone Change will allow for the development of a senior housing complex with retail suites on the bottom floor. Each of the second and third floors of the project would contain seven units for a total of 14 units. 12 of the units would be for assisted living, while the remaining two would be for independent living. All of the units offer communal living, with four units on each floor containing three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and three units on each floor containing four bedrooms and three bathrooms. Each unit would also have a shared kitchen and a living room, and the units would contain between 1,000 square feet and 1,155 square feet. The project would also contain two ground-floor retail suites measuring 900 square feet and 1,100 square feet. The retail businesses would largely serve the needs of the project residents and could include things such as a beauty salon or a pharmacy. There will be 27 parking places, which would be located on the bottom floor. The project would also include an exercise room, an activity room, a kitchen, a common dining area, and a rooftop sun deck. The facility would have a total of 48 employees with an average of 15 per shift. Employees would include housekeepers, nurses, caregivers, medical technicians, cooks, management, and security. Here's a look at the existing General Plan land use designation, which is Central Business District. This is the proposed General Plan land use designation, which is mixed-use commercial and senior living facility. This is a look at the existing zoning, which is General Commercial. And this aerial shows the proposed zoning of PDPS, mixed-use commercial and senior living facility. And finally, this aerial shows the existing land use of General Commercial. Here's a look at the elevations of the project, which utilizes a number of different types of building materials, has multi-level roof lines, balconies, and decorative canopies. And this is a look at the site plan. Paramount Boulevard is running north and south on the right, and 70th Street is running east and west on the bottom. Parking would be accessed off of the alley between, from the two driveway entrances noted on the site plan. An outside consultant conducted an environmental analysis of the project. The analysis found that the project would not produce negative impacts to the surrounding area, and a mitigated negative declaration is recommended. In summary, the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change will allow for the development of a senior housing complex. There is a growing need for facilities that can offer both assisted and independent living, and the proposed project will help to meet this need. As John mentioned earlier, the city will be contributing $300,000 to the project from our Low to Moderate Income Housing Fund, and this will ensure that two units will be restricted as affordable. The proposed project is located near the library, the Civic Center Gardens, and shopping. The project will also eliminate blight at an entrance to the city. The project also meets key strategic outcomes adopted by the City Council, including a safe community, promotion of community health and economic health and environmental health. And finally, the development group that is proposing this project has extensive experience in constructing and operating assisted living facilities. And we're recommending that the City Council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program, and read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 21003, approving the General Plan Amendment, and then read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance 1148, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption, and this would approve the Zone Change. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Just a reminder, if you're not speaking, please make sure that your device is muted. I'm getting background noise of people talking and things playing around. I don't know if it's at City Hall, but please make sure that your device is muted if you're not speaking. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I'd like to open it and see if there is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item.
No, Madam Mayor.
Anyone in opposition?
Again, no, ma'am.
Okay, questions? Discussion from council?
Madam Mayor, I have one question for educational purposes only. I understand that the setting partial measuring is about 14 and a half feet in the way. in the width by a hundred feet in length is located in the city of Long Beach. What happens if the city of Long Beach has been approved of the project?
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Olmos. We've had this situation before, um, it was a project located south of Home Depot, and uh, the backyard of three, uh, single family residences were in the city of Long Beach. At that time, they allowed us to act as the quote unquote lead agency, and we, uh, approved the plans through our plan check service, and we, uh, would anticipate that this would be the same in this situation.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. Are there other questions?
I have a question. Um, I know I spoke to staff earlier today about some, um, concerns I had about the project, and, uh, the conclusion that I came to is that of course we're using some of our low mod funds for the project, and so we could, um, deal with the concerns I had, um, at the time that, um, we placed, uh, conditions on that. Um, but a follow-up to that is what is the amount of money that, uh, we're providing through low mod? Um, is it significant enough that if the conditions that we may impose aren't met, that the project could still proceed? And if we proceed without those conditions right now, is the project given a green light?
Uh, yes, uh, we would come back to the city council with a development agreement with our, uh, contribution from the low to moderate, moderate income housing funds. And at that time, that development agreement would specify what would happen to this project in the future. We have, um, reviewed, we've had, uh, our consultant has reviewed a pro forma, uh, from the applicant. Um, we've looked at their financing, um, it's a very viable project with what they presented us. So we're confident that, that our three hundred thousand dollars plus the financing that they've, that they have secured will be sufficient.
Okay, so until we sign that development agreement, which would be at the point in time we would have any conditions placed on it, then the project is not a go, correct?
No.
What I'm trying to, let, let me maybe make this simple, I'm not trying to confuse, which is, I just want to make sure that what we're approving tonight doesn't give a green light until those conditions are discussed, and I know that we can place the conditions because of the low mod money, but if they just say, well, keep your low mod money, and we'll just go with the, uh, what you approved at the council meeting. Am I being clear enough or am I?
Yes, you are. And, uh, yes, approval of the project tonight would, would, would give it a green light, um, to go forward. Um, I'm looking over at John Kavanaugh to see if we can add something tonight, this evening, that would ensure that it's, uh, an assisted living facility, uh, without coming back with the development agreement.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last part of that. You looked at John Kavanaugh and he said, what?
I, I'm gonna look to John Kavanaugh to see if we could put something, uh, this evening on the project that would ensure it's an assisted living facility.
Yeah, I mean, there were like three issues that I had, um, Mr. Kavanaugh, that I just want to make sure, I told you that we could discuss those and speak about them when it came to the next step, because that's where we would be designating a low mod fund. But my worry is that, um, what if they just say, well, we'll just take the approval that you did, um, tonight, uh, on the twelfth, and we won't take your low mod fund? Because I don't know if that's significant enough for them not to move ahead with the project.
You, Madam Mayor, this is John Kavanaugh. Those are good questions. I have a question for John Carver. John, the, the entitlements right now are only to allow the property to be developed in accordance with zoning, correct?
No, uh, the approval this evening would, would approve the, the PDPS zoning, which would allow for the assisted living facility.
Right, but they, would they have to make a, a separate application for the actual development?
No, that has been, the, the, the development itself has been approved by the development review board. So
Okay.
This is, this would be the, the only entitlements that would be needed.
Okay, Madam Mayor, based on the information that I've just received, um, from the planning director and your concern, I believe that there is some way that we can, um, we can compel the, uh, conditions to be done. I don't think there needs to be actually a, a formal action taken by the council, but I certainly can work with the planning and the applicant so that we can condition something that would require the, um, the low mod to be facilitated prior to us actually giving any money.
Okay, but my concern is, if I understand what you're saying, how far as to giving money, but if we approve the project tonight and give it a green light, what if they just say, then we don't want your money? Then we don't have anything to put conditions on, right?
If they don't want the money, that's correct. So
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, and, and let me look at staff for expertise, and, um, I'm sure this project is probably, you know, ten more than three hundred thousand dollars, how much of an impact does that really have? And although, you know, I'm fairly comfortable that they can address these issues, I'm not okay, and to the sort of edification that I've been arrested with my colleagues, my concerns, uh, were primarily stemmed for parking. Uh, there's not, uh, enough adequate parking being provided in this time for staff and for the people living there. But of course, the premise that, you know, the parking is based on is that these are going to be, um, people who won't be driving cars because it's assisted living, and therefore they don't need parking spaces. And, um, I didn't necessarily agree with that. That wasn't my experience in assisted living when, uh, my family members were in there. It was a mixed bag of people who still drove and they lived there, you know, because the food was provided and their rooms were cleaned and all of those things. And so one of the things I really want to focus on is not creating any new parking issues. And so that, along with the fact that, um, they, you know, some of them have, you know, three rooms, which is supposed to be for, you know, three different residents who have, you know, the need for assisted living and therefore would drive. And it says, well, and there's something written in there that says, you know, that the person who needs assisted living to move in, but they can't move in their son or their daughter or their aunt or uncle to help them, because now we're back to a parking issue again. So I just wanted those these kind of conditions in there that it, it is and it stays what it's proposed to be, and was told that we could do that when we did the low mod funding play those conditions. But what I'm hearing is if we approve it tonight, the low mod conditions not have to be met unless they accept the low mod money. And that's my concern.
Yeah.
Did I make myself clear, everybody? Or any comments or questions yourself?
Madam Mayor, if, if I could, we, we can write into, we can write into the PDPS zoning this evening that the level of care be assisted, and that would ensure that, um, anything we would, would have gotten from the development agreement will be in the zoning this evening.
Well, and, you know, that's fine with me, um, and the, but the language has to be, you know, that is, it, that it is assisted, and that these residents don't own or have need of a car. Everything's on that kind of around that, because this is a much needed, um, facility in the city, and the closest one I could find when, um, I had to use one was in Long Beach, and, you know, in North Long Beach, so it wasn't close, uh, I'm sorry, South Long Beach, so it wasn't close. But, um, I just want everything that's around, like, having additional people live in there, you know, family members, man, making sure that the residents don't have ownership of a car. Anything that could impact our parking needs to be taken care of, or there needs to be adequate on-site parking, which what the plan calls for is not enough right now. So if you feel like you could write everything in there that protects those issues, I'm perfectly okay with the approval, but I, I don't want it to be approved and then the guy, you know, because that's the cost of a parking lot, three hundred thousand dollars. To say, oh, forget it, you know, keep your money, I'll just move ahead because you're putting demands on me that I don't want to meet.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, we, we, we will work with John Kavanaugh.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is John Kavanaugh.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So this is council member, uh, Guian. So my concern to you was the parking, so I think that's very valid, but you suggested to put it in there because with fifteen employees at a time, that's gonna take up the twenty-six parking spaces, you know, give or take a few extra. So I thought that was very important, and then I also want to make sure that one of the things that we're talking about is that the low, what it, I think it was, I don't know how it was worded, the low, the low income, or I want to make sure that with the three hundred, like you said, isn't very much, but I, I think that's gonna be very important to have it there as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, this is John Kavanaugh.
Low modification, I, or, um, yeah, the low modification, yeah. All right, okay. All right, staff, so how do you feel about that? Are you comfortable that you can make that part of the condition?
Madam Mayor, this is John Kavanaugh. I reviewed the resolution, and I believe we can condition the actual resolution and articulate exactly what you want into that resolution so that unless they approve that, there will not be any general plan amendment approved.
Okay, now, is it wording that you need to have now tonight for the approval?
I would articulate those conditions right now and make that as a condition to the resolution number twenty-one zero zero three.
Okay, so do you want me to try to put all of that early into it, or do you have something, uh, legal ease there that you want to do yourself?
I, I think we have enough information to put it in.
Just based upon, uh, the commentary that was held during the meeting, that would be enough to formulate it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, uh, any other questions? Okay, reminder, um, this is an A and B item. This is verified staff, have we heard the report for A and B, or are we gonna need here something additional?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, we did hear the report already, but we do need a motion to close the public hearing as well.
Okay, but we're not gonna need, um, any more reports to be able to approve on A and B, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, if there are no other questions, I'll enter a motion to close the public hearing. This is council member Clara Stalling. I'm looking for to close the hearing, the public hearing. Okay. Second. Okay, uh, it's been moved by council member, uh, segmented by council member Guian, and we close the public hearing. Now, roll call please.
Councilmember Aguayo? Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah.
Okay, now we'll have a motion on ordinance number eleven forty-three, uh, what, I'm sorry, wrong one for you. We're up here. Uh, now we'll have a motion on resolution number twenty-one zero zero three, the general plan amendment for number two zero dash two.
Madam Mayor, the prior resol, the prior motion was on resolution twenty-one zero zero three as amended per your direction. The next motion, oh, I'm sorry, that was to close, you're right.
The idea was on, um, closing the public hearing.
You, you are correct, I apologize, Madam Mayor. It's twenty-one zero zero three, you are correct.
We need the
For item A, the resolution number twenty-one zero zero three.
Ma, Madam Mayor, uh, we do need a motion to approve the mitigation monitoring program and negative declaration.
Okay, now you want?
Okay, so that would be at the second page of the resolution. It would be number E, adopt a mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program, and then you would approve the resolution after that.
Okay, for being here, I have a public session up here. Go back. Okay. Okay.
Yes, second page of the motion sheet.
We have the public hearing, which is an A and B item, correct? Is it, sorry, the A and B items done missing?
Yes, if you go to the second page of the motion sheet for the item A.
Okay, item A.
And you see C letter E.
Okay, I see where you're talking about, thank you. Okay. Well, that's two zero dash two, isn't it? It called E and F here, and then started with an A and B item, so are you calling it E? And then I'm sorry, I'm totally confused.
Madam Mayor, if I could explain, there are two items, um, and we need three, three motions for item number A, three, three motions for item number A. So you already
Okay, that's, well, three motions for item A, and I see two here, E and F.
Yeah, but the, the, yeah, the, the, the first one you already did, which was a motion to close the public hearing, that's D, and then E is motion to adopt the mitigated neg- dec, and then F is motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, but that's part of A, correct?
That's all part of
To the point, why don't you just call the question, because we, I am totally lost.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, so
Resolution number twenty-one zero zero three here, you're saying has A, and it has two parts, which are E and F, okay? But in A, what I read off was amendment number two zero dash two, which is what it says E is, amendment two zero dash two.
That's correct, that's, that's the one that, that's, that would be motion number two, and then motion number three would be the adoption of the resolution.
Right, but we were just on the first one when you told me to stop, and I missed the resolution. That's what I just see how, we're hearing number A, and I read general plan amendment number two zero dash two, I call for a motion.
Right.
Is that what you want me to do?
Yep, let's do that.
Okay, that's what we're doing, folks. Yeah. I would add and move to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program related to the general plan amendment number twenty dash two. Thank you. This is council member Clara Stalling, I second. Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Vice Mayor Olmos and segmented by, uh, Clara Stalling, um, that we adopt an end of the declaration for amendment number two zero dash two.
Councilmember Aguayo? Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah. Now, we're gonna move on to the second half of item A, which is item F in your book, the read by title only and adopt resolution number twenty-one zero zero three.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved, almost.
Second, Aguayo.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Olmos and segmented by council member Aguayo, that we read by title only and adopt resolution number twenty-one zero zero three as amended.
Councilmember Aguayo? Councilmember Guian?
Yeah.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the second half, the, uh, ordinance number eleven forty-eight, and if I understood correctly, we've already had the staff report, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So is this your full information?
No, that's it, we did, we already did the report.
Okay, and do I need to reopen the public hearing for this part of the item?
I'm looking at the city attorney, says no, we do not.
Okay. So then we'll move to E, which is the motion to read by title only, waive further reading and air read ordinance number eleven forty-eight, zone change number two thirty, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption.
This is a council member Aguayo, I move the item?
Second, council member Guian.
Okay, we just, it's been moved by council member Aguayo and segmented by council member Guian.
so I will roll call please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gian?
Yeah.
Councilmember Clara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah. Thank you, staff, I appreciate you bearing with me through that confusion. We'll move to, um, item eleven, a public hearing on the pipeline franchise agreement renewal.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, last month, the city council declared its intent to hold a public hearing this month in regards to the renewal of two underground pipeline franchise agreements. As mentioned last month, these underground pipelines, they've been in place for, uh, decades now, and the city really cannot regulate them whatsoever, that's done by the state public utilities commission. We can only set a fee to them, so I just wanna remind you of that again. So, we're back tonight with the two public hearings, however, we're requesting that one of these public hearings be continued. Procedurally, even though, uh, that particular item will be continued, the city council will still need to hear any objections, and then you can continue the public hearing. Similar to, to what we just heard there, it'll be one presentation covering both items, and I hope we don't confuse you this time around, so with that, I'll hand it over to-
Now, I have to follow me to what happened last time, it was, uh, calling out too many numbers that got overlapped, so thank you, as I said, I apologize.
No problem, no problem at all. So with that, I'll turn it over to our assistant city manager, Mr. Andrew Vialpando, who will handle the item, Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, John already kind of, uh, handled the explanation for what's gonna happen with this, uh, eleven A item, uh, just a little bit of details. Last month, as John mentioned, uh, we brought forth to a notice, uh, an intent, a notice of intent to hold a public hearing. One of the pipelines was for pipeline number sixty-three, and this is operated by Pacific Pipeline. We went ahead and published the public hearing on December twenty-fourth, and just right after that, a representative from Pacific Pipeline, uh, contacted us and requested that we, uh, postpone the public hearing because they needed a little bit more time over the, due to the holidays to review the agreement. So this evening, we're coming to you, uh, we, we are obligated, uh, because we did post the public hearing, to actually open the public hearing and hear any objections, um, and then we're gonna go ahead and ask to continue the item to a specific date, which is February second, twenty-twenty-one, um, when we'll bring back to you an actual report of the public hearing at that time. Um, and with that, that includes my staff report for eleven A.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, just a reminder, the beginning of the public hearing, and the beginning of the time and the place for the hearing of objection to the renewal of the controlling pipeline franchise agreement with Pacific Pipeline for the S L L P.
Yes, and Ma- and Madam Mayor, I'm announcing that notice of this hearing has been given pursuant to section sixty-two thirty-two of the California Public Utilities Code, and that the affidavits and publication and posting are on file in the city clerk's office, and I'm also announcing that the number of written objections received is zero, um, at this point.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to testify in favor or in opposition of this item?
No, ma'am, there's no one wishing to testify.
Okay. Now you need a motion to continue the public, first of all, let me allow you, if you have, um, any questions or comments of this night, council? Okay, so I need a motion to continue the public hearing on ordinance number eleven forty-three, February second, twenty-twenty-one, at six p.m. This is Councilmember Clara Stallings, remove the item for February second, two thousand twenty-one, for, um, the renewal of the pipeline, pipeline, the continuing, yes, to the next day. Thank you. And the second- This is Councilmember Aguayo, I second the item. Thank you, it's been moved by Councilmember Stallings, segmented by Councilmember Aguayo, that we continue the public hearing on ordinance number eleven forty-three, February, uh, second, twenty-twenty-one, at six p.m. Roll call please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gian? Councilmember Clara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Did, did you call my name, Councilmember Gian, I didn't hear my name?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Gian?
Yeah.
And Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything further for staff on ordinance number eleven forty-four?
Uh, yes, indeed, there is, Mayor. Um, so, I, I'll go ahead and proceed with the staff report for this next agreement. Um, this next agreement will be, um, for ordinance number eleven forty-four, and, um, just a little bit of background of what you'll be, um, considering this evening. So, as you know, uh, Paramount is situated, um, along a very busy gateway cities region. Um, w- we notice a lot of freeway traffic, a lot of, um, truck traffic, but what you may not see so easily is all of the infrastructure beneath the surface. Uh, we sit atop of a pretty busy, uh, global economy of petroleum pipelines that run beneath, uh, the city. Uh, I would note that most of them, if not all of them, uh, don't originate in Paramount, uh, they, they originate sometimes many, many miles away, but they run past beneath our city, um, just like many other cities in our area. Uh, most of these pipelines carry product, whether it's petroleum, um, or some other product, uh, most on their way, their destination is either Long Beach or Los Angeles ports. As John mentioned, uh, just a moment ago, um, all of these pipelines in the state of California are regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. Both federal and state law, uh, that regulate these pipelines are very strict, and they preempt or, um, limit the city's ability to regulate them. Um, however, the city is entitled to fees, and, uh, also, um, as you can imagine, very reasonably, we're also entitled to, uh, some sort of, of information and knowledge, um, about what products run beneath us, and, um, we, we certainly are entitled to maintain relationships with the franchises that operate these pipelines. So specifically about this ne- this pipeline, uh, line number eighty, for over forty years, the city has maintained a franchise agreement with various petroleum, uh, service companies that operate line eighty. Line eighty is, is about nine thousand feet in length and runs under Garfield Avenue between the railroad at Peterson Lane and the city's border with Long Beach. This pipeline, over the last forty years, has changed ownership and, um, service providers, uh, several times, but it's currently serviced and maintained by Tesoro SoCal Pipeline Company. The pipeline agreement for this particular pipeline expired back in May, um, I'm sorry, May two thousand nineteen. Uh, Tesoro reached out to the city, uh, to request that we renew the agreement. The fees, as we discussed, are established by, uh, s- uh, section sixty-two thirty-one point five A of the public utilities, California Public Utilities Commission. So, the most, and the formula that's used in that fee by law, um, is primarily dependent on the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. So the latest, the most recent payment that was made to the city for the operation of this pipeline was forty-eight hundred dollars, uh, four thousand eight hundred, um, so we expect it to increase, uh, nominally, uh, in the next couple of year, over the next couple of years. It benefits the city to enter into this agreement so that we can maintain some control and understanding of how they're maintained. For example, uh, in the agreement, we include, uh, financial bond guarantees, indemnifications, um, we require that Tesoro notify the city in the event of a spill or an environmental hazard or threat, and that they would be required to remediate any damages, pull permits, et cetera. Franchises are strictly liable for all damage caused in connection, if that were to occur. All laws and regulations, as you can imagine, have changed over the years, so it benefits the city to enter into an agreement so that we can continue to maintain this relationship with the franchise. That said, um, in order to enter into this agreement by ordinance, it requires a public hearing and adoption at a subsequent meeting held by the city council. Uh, a notice of public hearing for ordinance number eleven forty-four was posted in the Paramount Journal on December twenty-fourth, and the public hearing is set for this evening. Uh, so with that, it is recommended that the city council read by title only, waive further reading, introduce ordinance number eleven forty-four, and place it on the January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one agenda for adoption. Um, and we do have representatives from Tesoro, uh, with us on the line in case any of the city council have any questions. So with that, uh, that concludes my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Andrew. This is a public hearing, am I announcing that, the beginning of the time and the place for the hearing of objection to the renewal, what, my, my item? Yes, okay. To the controlling of the pipeline franchise agreement with Tesoro's original pipeline because of the L L P.
Uh, yes, and this is to announce that, uh, notice of this hearing has been given pursuant to section sixty-two thirty-two of the California Public Utilities Code, and that the affidavits of publication and posting are on file in the city clerk's office, and this is further to announce that, uh, we have received no written objections, um, at this point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno, is this time for anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition of this item?
There is no one wishing to speak in either, ma'am.
Is there any discussion or questions by councilmembers? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So move, Olmos. Second, Clara Stallings. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Olmos and segmented by Clara Stallings, that we close up the public hearing, roll call please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gian?
Yeah.
Councilmember Clara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah. Next, I need a motion on the item. This is Councilmember Aguayo, I move the item. Clara Stallings, I second. Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Councilmember Aguayo to overrule and deny all objections to the read by title only, waive further reading, energy to ordinance number eleven forty-four, place it on the January twenty-sixth, uh, should that be twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Twenty-twenty-one, agenda for adoption. Then we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gian?
Yeah.
Councilmember Clara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah. Thank you, sorry about that, been questioning what year I am. Okay, item number twelve, consideration for the city of Paramount Code of Conduct and Rules of Decorum and Procedures for the Conduct of the City Council. I have a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I'll be handling this item. Um, with a healthy crop of new commissioners, and for that matter, a couple of new council members, staff has been approached about a variety of issues, um, regarding things such as proper protocol, assignment of work, and also the issuance of business cards for commissioners. Um, in an effort to bring clarity, in an effort to bring also message consistency and transparency to this matter, the city and I, the city attorney and I have discussed the option of what is called a code of conduct, and that's what's before you tonight for consideration. Um, a code of conduct is commonly used by many cities, in fact, some of the cities in our area that have a code of conduct in place already include this, this, the cities of Bellflower, Cerritos, La Marada, Norwalk, and Signal Hill. The code of conduct, um, if approved by the city council tonight, it would clearly lay out the expectations for the rules and behavior of public officials, and when public officials are referred to in this, throughout this document, uh, this would include both elected and appointed officials of the city. So this would cover both council members as well as commissioners. In the staff report, uh, before you tonight, I mentioned that a code of conduct was written about in a recent issue of Western City Magazine, which, as you know, is the magazine of the League of California Cities. Uh, the article says that a code of conduct is one of the main components in establishing civility in local government because such codes articulate the ground rules for how elected officials will behave. Additionally, adopting a code of conduct would bring another layer of professionalism to our organization. Now, there is a difference between a code of conduct and rules of decorum. Rules of decorum, which the council adopted back in twenty-seventeen, institutes rules of behavior and overall protocol for public meetings, and in fact, that's a segue into, uh, the next, uh, report, which is about an amendment to the rules of decorum. Uh, recently, at a council meeting, we had a couple of public commenters request that they be, um, given, uh, that they, uh, allot the remainder of their three-minute public comment into, um, a moment of silence. Um, our current rules of decorum do not include a procedure that allows for this request. Um, as a result, that this, our, our city attorney has amended the rules of decorum to include that request. Um, so that is, um, also with, uh, your staff report tonight. So, again, a code of conduct is more broad-based and applies to all s- all situations for public officials, and the rules of decorum, um, are pretty much specifically for public meetings. And that concludes my presentation, and with that, there are two approvals, uh, for you, before you tonight, one is, uh, it's recommended that, that the city council read by title only and adopt resolution number twenty-one zero zero two for the code of conduct, and the second one is recommended that the, the city council approve the amended rules of decorum and procedures, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno, questions, discussion from, uh, councilmembers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a question, I need something clarified, um, John, if you could help me out, so, as I was reading the resolution, um, on the very first page, section two, it states that, um, this actually, the council finds and declares that its members and all members appointed board and commissioners collectively are considered public officials, will abide by the following four principles. But then when I look at page six, section eight, the enforcement, it seems like it only applies to the city council.
Okay, uh-
So-
Um, yes, there's-
So, if you could just clarify that for me, is section eight applies to the city council and, um, appointed board and, and appointed, uh, commissioner?
Yes, uh, this is John Cavendall, Vice Mayor Olmos, I wanted to, uh, distinguish those, those issues because with, when you look at the enforcement part of it, um, section B, A through C involves council and commissioners. Section D involve, section D and E, um, involve enforcement against members of the city council alone, but section F only applies to commissioners, and the reason why that is, is because commissioners under our municipal code operate and are appointed at the will of the council, so, in fact, there really is no, uh, disciplinary or level of, of, um, enforcement other than, because if you go through the due process part of section A, B, or C, and you find that it is enough to say the commissioner should not be on the board or commission anymore, you can take that action under F, which is warranted under the municipal code. Does that make sense?
It totally does, thank you, John, that clarified it, thank you.
You bet.
Is anyone else? Okay, so, we'll place before you resolution number twenty-one zero zero two, establishing a code of conduct for a vote, and we need a motion on that. So move, Olmos? Second, Clara Stallings. Hey, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Olmos and segmented by Councilmember Aguayo, to read by title only and adopt resolution number twenty-one zero zero two. Can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Aguayo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gian?
Yeah.
Councilmember Clara Stallings?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yeah. Next up, we have the motion in order to approve the amended rules of decorum and procedures. Did, uh, you cover that, John, or do you need your, uh, more staff report? Did, uh, you cover that, John, or do you need your, uh, more staff report?
No, ma'am, I did, I did already cover that. Yes, I, I did already, I already covered that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That one part was covered.
You got it.
Okay. Wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something again. So, um, any discussion or questions on this item? If not, a call for the question. I move the item, Quara Stallings. Second, ma'am. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Stallings, and then by Councilmember Guillen to approve the amended rules of decorum and procedures. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Guillen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes, I can clearly hear you, Heidi.
Councilmember Olmos.
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yeah.
Next, we'll go to a report of the public safety resident satisfaction survey.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Every year we bring to you a review of the resident satisfaction survey that we do for our public safety services. And the numbers for this year look very positive. So with that, I'll turn it over to our public safety director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, who will handle the presentation. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Um, Danny, if you could assist me with moving this slide, that would really appreciate it. Um, first of all, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is the item that is presented to you every year at the beginning of the year so we can review our, um, the data that has been collected for 2020. I'll go ahead and move to the next slide, which is the background. And, uh, this is covered in 1997, public safety began collecting what we refer to as survey data. And we wanted to see what kind of service we were providing that included law enforcement as well as public safety. The survey that, uh, when the data that we collect, collected, uh, was used to create what we call the inland line of duty reports. And we continue to use that report on a regular basis. Next slide, Ms. Danny. So what we do every day, our public safety staff conducts what we refer to as quality assured phone calls from the previous day. We collect, um, information on four different callers. Um, what we do is we select two callers from the day shift, technically afternoon, and then also two callers for the PM shift, or also referred to as evening. Next slide, please. So our public safety staff will ask, uh, the callers five different questions. And the first four, we ask them to rate us. So they're asked about their experience with the services regarding dispatch. And some of the ratings that you see on the right-hand side would be very satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, or indifferent. They're also asked to rate us on the response time, law enforcement services, and overall services. The last question would just be, um, if they received a form, which we refer to as, as a satisfaction form compliance, or satisfaction compliance form, I should say. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the, uh, sample report that I refer to. As you can see here, you'll see the date, and we conduct four calls on a, on a regular basis, a database. And what we did here is we wanted to have them being so that we could, um, maintain the privacy of the caller. And then we also, um, modified the location. We did not want to be of a very specific location. And then also the type of call. As you can see here, we do not call people that were part of any type of violent crime. Uh, we just feel that would be inappropriate. Most of our crimes will be, as you can see here, it's just, uh, brutally, kind of fast, um, things of that nature that are not, uh, really under a violent crime type of status. As you can see on the, the columns there, you have dispatch, response time, reporting officer, and overall rating. Next slide. Okay, as, as we mentioned, this is the form that's given out when we have a CSO or a deputy go out there. Um, sometimes it's not given, but when it is, and the resident has the opportunity to, um, either send it to us or drop it off, we collect these in various forms. This one that, um, you see on your screen, you have the date, um, the officer, which was a CSO, the type of call. And in this situation, they did not rate us in terms of, um, what type of service they provided or the rating of the deputy as CSO, but they did provide a comment. Next slide. So as I mentioned, um, the caller is asked to rate us. In 2020, you could see that we have, uh, very high rating and, uh, satisfied, that would be the highest percentage that we receive at 75%. And then we also have very satisfied, which is at 22. If we have those two categories, that's the highest percentage that we have at 97. Um, once again, they rate us on dispatch services, response time, and the reporting officer. We have them indifferent, and then we have dissatisfied at 2%. I do want to let you know that we, we get some type of dissatisfied, uh, response depending on if it's a CSO or a deputy. If it's a deputy, we forward that to the sergeant, and they will call back and see what it was or what they were dissatisfied. Sometimes it's, uh, as you can see, it's the response time, and we explain to them one of the reasons why they might have taken longer than anticipated. And then just to explain the, the last category, which is not applicable, uh, sometimes what happens is that uh, the victim does not place the call for service, so they do not have any interaction with the dispatcher. And then the response time and reporting officer, not every call will lead to a call for service being generated. So that's the explanation for that category. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and it's just a daily review and file report.
Thank you, Adriana, for that report. Do you have any questions for her council members? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item 14, uh, the agreement for telecommunications services.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, last item tonight on a new business, uh, we are seeking your approval on an agreement for our new phone system. Uh, this phone system would be, um, installed at all three of our main facilities. That is city hall, city yard, as well as the station, and I believe in, um, some of our outlining, uh, park facilities as well, like the community center and Spanney Park and so on. Uh, this is a very exciting project.
I'm sorry, but I, I don't have any volume. Is anybody else there? I can hear lower than usual, but I still hear it. John, you wanted to, there's something you can do to keep up with your procession?
Okay, is this better?
Um, you're very probably, um, so I don't know if council, if any other council members, I can hear you, but you start to have the speech that we can't hear.
Okay.
Okay, baby. I'm getting static. Okay, thank you. Static.
Is that better?
Can you even turn over a mic maybe, John? Somebody who wasn't having problems doing that, though?
Okay, I just moved to another mic. Is that any better?
Much better.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, great. Um, I just wanted to wrap up my introductory comments by saying, uh, not only will we be, replace an extremely outdated phone system uh, with 25-plus years, um, of age, but, uh, we'll be saving a large amount of money with this new phone system. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to our assistant city manager, Mr. Andrew Vialpanda, who will handle the item. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and, uh, good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Um, Madam Mayor, can, can, how do you hear me?
Fine.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, as John kind of, um, provided to you, just a, a brief introduction, this is a, this is something we're, we're just really, really, really excited about. Um, I, I recall a few council meetings ago, uh, there, there, there was some lack of enthusiasm, I think, from staff on a report, and I, I didn't want to fall into that trap this time. I really want to, uh, to express how excited we are for this. And, um, this is definitely going to bring us into the, uh, the 21st century. So with that, we've been operating on the same phone system for over 20 years. We've had, um, quite a bit of, um, of technical difficulties over the last few years. We have frequent outages. Um, and, uh, you know, you know, it's, we're operating on old analog systems, um, just to kind of give you some context here. Uh, they don't even sell the phones anymore, uh, that, that we use, um, or even the lines that we connect them to. So, uh, hopefully tonight's presentation will kind of introduce to you what the new technology will look like, but also all of the work, um, that ha- we've done over the last year to get to the point where we're at. Um, we've been looking into replacing our phone system over the last few years. Um, it's just a very, very complicated and complex project. Uh, there's a lot of technical expertise that is way, way beyond, uh, the resources that we have, uh, here amongst staff and within the city. Um, so we needed to lean heavily on some technical experts to help us get to this point. Um, and hopefully through articulating just how much work this is involved, this can really explain why we're so excited to be at this, this juncture here. Um, so with that, uh, again, it was a very complex project, so we, we needed to hire a telecommunications consultant, and we did that back in April of last year, 2020, uh, to come in and basically study our current system. Um, before, we felt that before we went out a- and solicited for proposals and solicited for, um, uh, you know, other vendors out in the telecommunications world, we really needed to understand what we currently have. Um, and what, what, more importantly, what our infrastructure is. Um, for instance, and this is just an analogy, but picture trying to operate a three-lane highway on a side residential street. Um, obviously physically it's impossible, and that analogy is, is pretty spot-on. Um, we, we just, we would bring in theoretically a brand-new system and operate it on a backbone that just wouldn't be able to, to carry, um, the workload that, that a new system would bring in. So we, we went to a consultant to help us understand better what we had. Um, in doing that, they took an inventory of all of our phone lines across the city, and believe it or not, oh, we found out, uh, it was, it, it was, um, revealing to us that we have over 300 phone lines that we use, uh, just for the City of Paramount, um, as our organization. Um, they also did a very comprehensive audit of our internet speed and infrastructure of facilities. And, uh, as we go through the presentation to show you what the new system will look like, you'll understand why, uh, internet is so important here. Um, they've also reviewed all of our current maintenance and service agreements that we have with the current phone provider, um, which is the foundation for, um, realizing just how much money we'll be saving moving forward. Um, and a- as I mentioned, all of this was worked up to basically, uh, developing the scope of work for our request for proposals. Um, so we really feel that we put out a product out there, um, an RFP out there to the, to the world, to the telecommunications world, um, that was not only comprehensive, but, uh, articulated the needs that we really, really wanted here in the city, um, to get the best bang for our buck. Um, so before I turn it over to, uh, our project manager who was overseeing the project, um, this is just a snapshot of the timeline of how we got to this point. Um, we published the RFP on October 2nd. Um, it's, it's not, i- it's not common with all RFP processes, but, um, we wanted to definitely offer it, uh, in this process just because of the technical expertise. We allowed vendors to do a site walkthrough of our, of our building, so they got a, a visual, in-person picture of the project that they would be undertaking. We allowed them to ask questions, uh, we, we replied to those questions, we interviewed, uh, top five vendors. And then something that was, uh, a bit unorthodox that kind of our, our staff came up with impromptu was, once we got down to the final two, uh, we actually did a one-week trial, um, which is, was unique for, for these companies, and they don't typically do that. So we actually got to test, uh, live systems for one week. And ultimately, uh, we selected the winning one, uh, that we feel would be the best product for our city. Uh, so with that, we're here before you, um, to review the agreement, and we hope to implement the project on April 1st. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to management analyst, uh, Danny Alizaradas, uh, who will walk you through, um, the, the proposed system. So Danny?
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, good evening, city council. During our RFP process, we received 23 requests for a copy of the RFP. We then received 10 very competitive proposals, uh, proposals that range from $2,400 to $5,200 for monthly service. Each proposal was carefully evaluated based on the city's criteria. This includes items like proposal thoughtfulness, cost, experience with municipalities, and overall ability to gain confidence in quality of product. After evaluating the 10 proposals, we invited five firms to interview. The interview panel was made up of our IT team, a management analyst, three administrative assistants from various departments to diversify our, our panel. We believed it was very important to include our, our clerical team members in the selection process due to the phone system being a vital tool for their day-to-day operation. Out of the five interviewees, two were asked to participate in a one-week trial of the proposed phone system in order to test the quality of the calls, user-friendliness, among other things. During the week of the trial, our sheriff station suffered an internet outage. With our new system being completely internet and cloud-based, uh, we asked both finalists what would have, what would they have done had they be, had, if they were our phone system provider. Uh, one of the proposers presented a better solution that weighed in our decision. Uh, with that said, we are recommending LogMeIn, um, for our phone system platform. LogMeIn really shined for a multitude of reasons. Some included their extensive municipality experience in the public sector. Um, also, they have a very public sector, um, model that is, I apologize. Um, a model that is public sector-centric in the industry, uh, specializing, specializing in the space for over 15 years. The quality of calls on their platform, uh, city references spoke highly of the product and customer service and support. Um, 97% of their customer, uh, they have a 97% customer retention rate. Um, in addition, they were the lowest monthly cost of all the proposers. And one of the most expensive costs with the new phone system is the hardware. And as an incentive, um, LogMeIn is offering, uh, free and discounted hardware from the actual phone manufacturer that the city is requesting with Polycom. These are phones that are, uh, very durable, uh, very reliable. And we actually, um, chose this as the phone that we want, the physical phone that we wanted to go with. And LogMeIn offered, uh, an incentive for us with free phones that approximately 97% of the phones that we would be purchasing are going to be free. So with LogMeIn, the city is going to get a plethora of new features and support, and support that includes, um, all in a monthly flat rate. Uh, here are just some of the items, including voicemail to email, both transcription as well as audio, uh, inter-office messaging. Office phones will have the ability to enable text messages, so they can receive and also send text messages from your office phone number or city phone number, uh, and soft phones. Uh, this is a really cool feature because you can actually make phone calls from your computer. Um, you'll have a digital dial pa- uh, pad, um, as well as the ability to receive, um, and send phone calls. And then also soft phones can be used on an application on a smartphone. So, um, a city staff member that is usually remote can actually receive phone calls through the application, and their phone calls will, the phone number that will be coming up would be their city cellphone of their incoming calls. Also, when they're trying to make outgoing calls, they can go through the application and make outgoing calls af- if, as if they were in their office. Um, also, another cool feature is multiple ring groups. So in the situation, if there's a specific group of individuals that are working on a project, um, there's, if like, um, if a resident calls all five, um, if they call one number, it can ring to five different individuals. Also, there can be a voicemail that all of them can access. So if someone's on vacation and, uh, a resident gives them a call, everyone can get the voicemail in either email or text, um, email or, um, in a voice ma- uh, in their mailbox. So it's a, it's a common mailbox. So this allows efficiency and effectiveness, and overall, a lot, a lot of other sophisticated phone features. And here's a big one. So here are some numbers of our current phone system. As you can see, we're, um, average, our average, we're As you can see, we're average, our average, we're averagely paying 84,000 to 91,000 annually for our current system. With LogMeIn, our first year would be $34,275 due to licensing and hardware costs. After that, we would be paying 29,000 for the annual service. I want to reiterate that LogMeIn was not only the best phone system solution presented for the most, that, with the most public sector experience, but they also had the lowest monthly cost, which was really amazing. I also want to bring to you, to your attention, the final column, the three-year cost. So this is what's the average if we were to stay the same in the blue column or in the blue, in the blue area, in the final column on the bottom, three-year total cost would be $253,000 to $275,000. This includes phone service as well as phone service maintenance. Because we have an antiquated system that is, that, that number can actually be a lot higher because everything's getting a lot older and it's breaking down. So that, that is just if we would stay the same. And in the green, we have LogMeIn. So the three-year cost would be $92,281. And this is again with a plethora of new features, more reliability, durability. And then we would be actually saving 161,000 to 180,000 over a three-year period. So with LogMeIn, it's a fraction of the cost while providing 21st century technology while adding layers of resiliency. So in conclusion, the city will be receiving a more reliable and resilient phone system, a plethora of new sophisticated features that will ultimately assist staff in better serving our paramount community and save the city up to 180,000 over it, over the next three years. It is recommended that the city council approve the agreement with LogMeIn for telecommunications services for a three-year term with the option to renew for additional one-year terms at the discretion of the city manager in the amount of 300, $34,275.51 for the first year and $29,200 per year thereafter. And authorize the city manager or his designated to execute the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I have several. First of all, in my understanding, this is basically a voice system?
Yes, this is a cloud-based internet system. It's, it's going over, going over the internet.
Are, is there the city or that a company doing anything to upgrade our internet at city halls? Before these phones are installed?
Yes, Mayor Lemmons, this is Andrew again. So actually, leading up to this project, leading up to this project, we've been working and have already achieved quite a bit of internet infrastructure improvements. We just recently, over the last couple of months, installed a new fiber line to city hall. We've been working with Spectrum to upgrade fiber internet to all of our city facilities. And we've negotiated a very competitive rate and they have already started work on that. So back to the analogy of three-lane highway on a residential road. Now we'll be operating a three-way highway on a five-lane freeway.
Are all of the, are all of the upgrades to the internet going to be completed before you put it in place?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. I am not a fan of voice systems. I found them to be an absolute disaster. But one of the issues that contributed to my problems was the fact that the internet wasn't strong enough to carry for the voice system. So I know how extremely important that is, but the second part of that is you brushed over, well, what, you know, there's backups or whatever if the internet goes down. Now, I know that there have been, I'm going to say several occasions, that we got notice from the city, oh, sorry, our internet is down, sorry, you can't do email, whatever. So being as you're 100% with the voice system dependent upon the internet working properly, what is the backup that they're giving you that when the phone, when the internet goes down, you still have phone service at city hall?
Yes, Mayor, we'll answer that in two, two parts. I'll answer the internet part. So absolutely, you're right. Previous outages and, and technical difficulties related to internet outages were certainly a concern. And which is exactly why we, we stress the importance of upgrading to fiber. So that, as I mentioned, is a project separate from the telephone project, which we are near completion on. So we do expect to remedy and mitigate a lot of future outages for that reason. I'm going to give it back to Danny to talk about reliability and redundancy of the phone system to address any concerns regarding outages for the phone system.
Well, thank you, Andrew. Yes, Mayor, so with LogMeIn, they have, they have different databases. So the actual cloud, the cloud-based system, it's, they have, I think it's 99, it's 99.993 that it's always up. So it's, it's, it's designed. So if one of their databases goes down, and also they have databases across the, across the world. So if there's a man-made or natural disaster in one area and one of their servers goes down, they can, you know, they can shift over to another one. As well as, like Andrew said, we, we built our new infrastructure with layers of redundancy. So if one internet goes down, we have bridge, we have different forms. And then lastly, even the wonderful thing about this platform is also that it has the soft phone feature. So it can easily be accessed through our, through our cellular data. So we can use those applications. So we can actually use hotspots as well as smartphones. So if we, if the community
That's going to be the internet went down. I mean, then your internet is going to be impacted too because it's not too bad for the office, city hall.
So we're, we're going to have multiple hubs with different internet services. So that's, so in the situation if Spectrum would go down, we would have another internet provider at another hub. And because of our infrastructure fiber, we can shoot over internet from another site. And then if that would go down, we also have the, we can go to cellular data to use that. So there are different layers of redundancy that it, that it's very unlikely that all, every single layer is going to go down. So if we do have difficulty with one internet provider, we built a backbone where we can actually get internet from another hub. What we, we didn't have before.
How dependent, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I just want clarification. So how dependent are you on Spectrum then? They're providing your internet, right? But you're saying that you have multiple other providers, so you're not dependent upon Spectrum?
We are.
So we actually entered into a service level agreement, otherwise known as an SLA with Spectrum. They're legally required to provide us with up speed. So if they go down or have an outage, we now have an agreement as part of this new upgrade of fiber, which would hold Spectrum accountable for ensuring that we get up in a, within minutes. And they, for beyond that, have agreements with other internet providers to bring our service back online. The fiber technology is something that enables this to be possible, which wasn't possible before. It, we used to run on coaxial cables and you couldn't simply quote unquote, shoot internet between lines. Fiber is different. Fiber does offer instant switching of internet service. And I would caveat all that with the, the, Spectrum has expressed to us that since they've upgraded their, their infrastructure over the last few years with fiber, they've experienced a lot less outages. Typically where outages occur are in areas that don't have fiber.
Okay, and on the, I, was there available or do they even still have hardline phones that are, what is your only option now?
It's, that isn't something that is industry standards now. A lot of it is going towards this voice system.
I know what the industry standard is, believe me. I just want to know.
Yeah.
Because I'm asking this, a lot of things you're saying, I've heard it all, you know? And we've all experienced, especially in this community, a lot of promises. And I know I pay for the highest fee that supposedly Spectrum allows, but we're doing home-based schooling. The internet is not as dependable as you would like it to be. Let's just put it that way. But my question would just be if they're available, because I was just wondering if you could have at least one hardline available at city hall if your phone goes down, so that, you know, somebody could answer and say what the situation is or, you know, what's going on. So that you have some availability, availability to reach out if you do lose internet, if you, for teaching one.
Mayor Lemmons, actually, I'm glad that you brought up that point because during our one-week trial, that's exactly what happened with the sheriff station. And that's one of the deciding factors with the final two finalists. We told them, you know, if, if internet completely went down, what was one of their solutions? And then again, both of them have the ability to go cellular data, but one actually offered analog. So there's an actual device that we can purchase that we can keep around two to four analog lines, just a retainer.
Do you have the ability with the vendor you're choosing to go analog?
We can, that is again, a level of redundancy. So in the situation, if internet would go completely down, cellular would go down, we can go to that third layer of analog and still function as a city to make outgoing and incoming calls.
And you said, yes, you can, correct?
Yes, that's actually one, that is one of our last lines of defense. So it like,
I do understand that. It's a last line. I'm just asking, yes or no, do you have access to analog? This is the job as that last line is done.
Yes. I'm sorry, Mayor Lemmons. I said, yes, sorry.
Yeah. What, is my, is my, is my question clear?
Mayor Lemmons, this is Andrew.
The last line is done. So yeah, so you have it, you have access to analog then?
Yes, we will have access to one or two analog lines as backups, that it will not be our primary form of communication.
No, I wouldn't expect it to be a primary, but that's where I think you'll have something because there's nothing worse than trying to do business and be absolutely dead. You know, I, I get through that with the voice system. I love it. There's some kind of, I know this is the future. You know, I, I experienced it. It's all I get it. So that's all my questions. Thank you very much. Okay, so we need a most, anybody else have any questions to session on the side of our energy motion? Come on, let's move on.
Take your course, Sally. Hey, this is by my senior almost, I can declare our following that we approved the term. Our service was all LogMeIn Incorporated, the telecommunications services for a three-year term with the option to renew or additional one-year term with the discretion of the city manager and amount of $34,775, because you want to set for the first year and $29,000 per year thereafter and authorize city manager or those who need to execute the agreement. Can I have a little call please?
Councilmember Aguayo.
Yes.
Councilmember Guian.
Yeah.
Councilmember Quera Stallings.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Olmos.
Yeah.
Mayor Lemmons.
Do you call my name?
Yes, Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. Thank you. I don't know why, Heidi, but you're dropping out every once in a while completely. Okay, with that, we'll move on to comments and committee reports from council members. And being as you're the first pretty picture I saw, Vice Mayor Olmos, good to you.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that compliment. So a couple of committee updates for contact fees. It was our first meeting this past Monday, our executive meeting. And I do want to share with you that they are also working with the county to help find ways to distribute the vaccine. So that is again, something that the contact cities are also going to be working on as a priority. And I do want to remind my colleagues of the virtual legislators tour that started today. It will be for the next three Thursdays and the next Thursday, we will be speaker, and the ready. So if you guys, you know, have time, it starts around 12 o'clock at 1:00. And they're having speakers from legislators for the next three Thursdays. For leave California cities, wanted to bring your attention some of the focuses they spoke about in the first of 2021. They're going to be focusing on housing, relief funding, and a lot of discussion around broadband access. And I do have a couple of follow-up items for staff as well. John, I know a couple of months ago, we discussed efforts of ways to improve community cleanup. And I know right now due to COVID, we're not allowed to execute programs. However, though, you know, is there a way that we can actually start like a help us see Paramount clean campaign? Maybe whether it be on social media or even around town, like I'm looking at the important numbers like how to report to people, dumping bulky ways to pick up or even promoting the Paramount workout. I think what I said, I know we can't be out in the community, but maybe we could start about being eternally that way that we can improve pitching Paramount that way when we are ready to be out in the community, you know, our program can start.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor. We, yes, absolutely. We can, we can definitely beef up the public education campaign that we have for the Pick It Up Paramount program. So it is due for another blast on social media and on our, our email. So yes, we, we will do that.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Another thing too, if possible, at our next meeting, if we can get an update from, can you think about the second meeting garden that we discussed again, months or so ago? And any discussions, locations, if possibly we could bring it to the next council meeting? My next thing is, I know, John, you touched on it. Thank you for giving the explanation for getting a council meeting, great information regarding the distribution of the vaccine. Today, I think it was yesterday, to the Raja Hahn, obviously, there's a great link. And I'm hoping that we can make sure that it's on our COVID website. It was a great link that showed, you know, all those breakdown of phases, who to call, doctors that want to distribute vaccine, you know, how they can be involved to be a part of the distribution. So I could show that we would do, John, if you don't have it, it was a great, great link with a lot of good information.
Yes, we do have the link, Vice Mayor. So we did do a social media blast on it today. But we will definitely put it on the webpage that's on the city's website, the COVID webpage.
Perfect. Thank you. And my last thing as a city, you know, I took a look at the county public health website. And I know, you know, we're at 7,901 positive cases, we're at 72 staff in, in our community. So I'm really stressed at the community. Please, you know, wear your mask and stop the social gatherings if, if that's possible. I mean, over New Year, you know, Paramount was busy with a lot of gatherings of families. And I think, you know, I'm reaching out to you guys, please help our community to, to decrease our cases, you know, we need to work together. And that's all I have, I have in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Olmos. Councilmember Aguayo.
Yeah, just to, you know, reiterate what Vice Mayor Olmos said about COVID. It really hit close to home for me. You know, I've been stressing from the beginning, you know, wear your mask, stay home. You know, find stuff to do around the house, you know, figure things out. Both of my parents were actually very, very ill over the holidays. Both were on oxygen machines. They had, you know, around the clock care. You know, one of my brothers was taking care of them, but they were very careful. They didn't go anywhere. In fact, my mom had not gone anywhere. It was always my dad that was, you know, they had anything to do or he had any errands. Or when to spill or even going to the grocery store, whatever it was, but they were very, very careful. And still they were very, very careful. So thankfully we are better now. They are in the recovery stages. But it's one of the long process. You know, there's doctors, two to three months possibly. It's not worth it. It's not worth it. If you don't have to be out, stay home. Stay home for not just yourself, but for your loved ones. We really need to think about other people during this time and, again, wear your mask, wash your hands, be very, very, you know, careful about, about not forgetting. We've been at this for, I mean, we can pretty much say a year. We've been at this for pretty much a year. And we're tired. We're, we're maybe getting careless. I think we're getting careless and we really need to focus because when it hits that close, it's very scary, very, very scary. close, it's very scary, very, very scary, to see the people you love in that state, where they can't walk without help, you kind of have to help see them. I don't wish it for anybody. So please, please. And so with that, you know, we are starting, you know, our New Year, 2020 was not exactly the best, we can't say, it wasn't, it definitely wasn't what we were anticipating, you know, but it wasn't, it wasn't totally bad, I don't want, it was great, but it was, it was okay. Perspective is everything, that's the key, it's how we look at things. So 2020 was, was a year of a lot of lessons, and where we learned to value the things that are important, maybe, you know, our time, just different things that maybe we have forgotten that we enjoyed, gardening, or for some people, you know, cooking, or whatever, you know, reading a book, a lot of us come back to those things. So 2020 wasn't totally bad, and 2021, it's, it's been interesting, you know, it's been about a week since we saw a heartbreaking event that unfolded at our country's capital, something I know I never imagined I would see, and I'm sure that there wasn't anybody else that ever thought we would see something like that. This is not the United States I want for my children. So right now, perhaps more than ever, it's important to come together, despite our differences, regardless of our political preferences and affiliations, we can disagree, we don't have to see eye to eye all the time, some of the greatest moments, or the most progress that they may have come from, you know, those, those discussions where, you know, two people, you know, or a couple of people, you know, didn't see eye to eye, but they came to an understanding for the greater good of the community. We need to do that. As Paramount residents, as LA County, what is it, you know, and going on, we need to remember to just, please, please, be kind, be kind to one another. That's, that's all I have, I'm praying for everyone in our beautiful city of Paramount to have a blessed night. Thank you, Councilmember Aguayo. Councilmember Guillen?
Good evening, everybody, I just wanted to talk about a couple things, and I'm going to make it quick, because they were pretty much addressed. I agree with Councilmember Olmos, or Vice Mayor Olmos, Paramount, yes, during this pandemic, a little more dirty, and a lot more litter in the street, so whatever we can do to get that campaign going, I agree, I think we need to do that. The other thing, I had concerns over the last week, for something that was already touched on by our city manager, and I appreciate that, because one of the things that we discussed in 2020 was about more transparency. So I'd like to address the issue with Golden State, and as I sent you an email during the week, I hope we can get that on our environmental portal, if we haven't already. It's just so that we're transparent with what's going on, and then people in the north end can make their own decisions, that they want to use bottled water, or they feel confident drinking that water, but it's just about transparency, so I appreciate that. And then I also appreciated the notification that I received about the press conference from World Energy and the settlement that stemmed from 2017, and I think that would be good information to put on the portal as well. And I'm hoping I don't have so many, like, people coughing, I have to wearing my mask, and I have to isolate, so. So those were the two issues that I wanted to talk about, and I just want to say, though, I think as a city, we have gotten much better on our transparency, and I hope we move forward. That continues to be our goal, putting the information out there, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Quara Stallings.
Yes, Mayor Peggy, Mayor Lemmons, just to give you an update, I'm called, one of my meetings I had this month, we had a, we got introduced to our new House trans-district supervisor, he had some great ideas, and he's going to be working on those, and we had a presentation by the House Coast HQ and P regarding the track fleet demonstration proposal. So hopefully one day we're going to see big rights, you know, instead of using gasoline or diesel, there are going to be electrical trucks. So that was from my meeting. I would like to thank Councilmember Vicious Farnes, from the city of Alpharo, and Bill Seacoast, Director of Family Community Guidance Center, for selecting two of our restaurants to receive a gratifying a thousand dollars from the Office of Supervisors, Janet Hahn. These two restaurant owners were so appreciative, and they both got very emotional, and it was, someday they said that they really needed, and I really appreciated both of them for coming and doing the presentation. And same thing with Vice Mayor Olmos said, and Isabel, and Lori, you know, let's keep our city clean, let's do our best. I did, we see a full call, residents in our city starting to look trashy, and I did address it to John Moreno, and he said he, it was going to be taken care of. And I also told my neighbors, you know, let's keep our street clean, and everybody, Vice Mayor Olmos said, let all take care, let all take care of our beautiful city. And last, Joel, the CPI is the former commissioner here in the city, her loss is why I moved in this past week, and I wanted to, I'm going to get a little emotional, because I kind of grew up with my sister-in-law living in a property in the building, anyway, my deepest condolences to this city and family, I am so sorry for your loss. And my, my condolences also go out to any family member in our beautiful city of Paramount. My deepest condolences to you, God bless you, have a good night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, we certainly appreciate all of your comments. Do we have comments or reports from staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was, you caught me off guard, because I thought you had some to do. Did you have any, any comments, Madam Mayor?
No, I do not.
I'm sorry?
No, I do not.
Okay, okay, great. Yes, I do have a few in addition to the two that I mentioned at the top of the meeting. We are continuing with our efforts to combat street racing here in the city, working with our deputies from the Lakewood Station. They had another successful weekend, or this past weekend, the task force did, they, just in Paramount alone, they cited twenty vehicles, two for, and, and I'm sorry, they made two reckless driving arrests. And then on Saturday night, they cited eighteen vehicles, they towed two vehicles, and they cited two other folks for spectating during a racing thing. So they, our deputies are definitely trying their best to address that as well. Earlier this week, the governor released his preliminary budget, and to our disappointment, there was no help for cities in combating COVID-19 in the governor's budget. So the League of California Cities is definitely starting to advocate for cities, and they will be calling on cities to help out with the advocacy as the budget plan goes through the state legislature. So this, this is very timely, it dovetails well to the legislative platform that the city council approved last night, I'm, excuse me, tonight, on the agenda. So we now have a platform that we can definitely put to use. In regards to development, we do have an update on the Tierra Mia Coffee House that is planned for the southeast corner of Rosecrans and Downey, and that's going to go behind the Seventy-Six Gas Station. Their plans were approved through Plan Check, as well as the grading plans, so they are free to start construction there at the site. We're going to try to get a timeline from them, hopefully this week, to see what the timeline is like on that. So more, more coffee coming to town. And yes, as Councilmember Guillen mentioned, we did get information from World Energy, actually from the California Air Resources Board, and that information has already been posted on this, the city's environmental website, so that is definitely up there. And the Golden State water issue that I mentioned earlier tonight, that will be up on the environmental website later this week. And lastly, just on behalf of the staff, I'd like to wish all of the city council and community a very Happy New Year, and cheers to 2021, hopefully it'll be much better.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. With that, we are going to leave us to the successor agency for the Paramount redevelopment I'm going to call that meeting to order, and ask for a call to Councilwoman, please.
Councilmember Aguayo?
Here.
Councilmember Guillen?
Here.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Here.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Here.
Mayor Lemmons?
Here. Any other comments?
No, ma'am.
Can I have a motion on the consent calendar? I'm moved, almost. Second, Quara Stallings? By almost, second by Quara, John Moreno will call.
Councilmember Aguayo? Councilmember Guillen? Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olmos?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. With that, we can adjourn to a meeting after your second 2021 at 5:00 PM. I now call back to order the Paramount City Council meeting, and we will be going into the closed session for a conference with real property negotiators, government code section 54956.8, property at 15525, 15541 Paramount Boulevard, in the city of Paramount, California, agency negotiator, the city manager, John Moreno, negotiating parties, Javier Ordónez, and under negotiation of price. Does everybody have the information for closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we are live now.
Do we have the five councilmembers? They're not showing up in my list.
No, as of last time, it's you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, do I need all five of them back, or is three of us?
Three is enough.
I'm sorry, John, what?
Three is enough, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll just move it, move ahead for your announcement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council did conduct, conduct a duly authorized closed session. The title of the closed session was Conference with Real Property Negotiators, presumed to Government Code Section 54956.8. The property in question is 15525-15541 Paramount Boulevard in the city of Paramount. The agency negotiator is the city manager, John Moreno, and negotiating parties was Javier Ordónez. Under negotiation was Price. At this particular time, the city council had entered into discussions, but no publication of any decision at this time is warranted, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in the honor of all the family members and friends that our nation has lost during this terrible pandemic. So everybody, be safe, be healthy, and God bless all, we're adjourned.